I would like to welcome you to the Mayor Commission Work Session. Today is December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is ten oh one A M. We will not have the President nor Commissioner Lambert here this morning. So we're going to work with this group this year. So we'll get started. First item is Art Life Presentation from Sibylle Walter.
Good morning. Sibylle Walter, Minister of Public Art and Culture. I'm here to present what happened in this last year. I am tallying it a year of uncertainty and change. So the program is governed by an ordinance and Art Life W P B five-year Public Art Master Plan. We exist to shape how public art is imagined, seen, and experienced throughout the city's neighborhoods and shared common spaces. Art Life is implemented by city staff as well as an art committee that advises city commission on all aspects of public art. We have seven members and two alternates that are appointed by the mayor. They either live or work in the city. Three minimum of the members must have an art background. So a year of uncertainty and change. This year's two thousand and twenty twenty-one annual report highlights the Art Life's programs, projects, initiatives, and accomplishments during one of the most challenging years, and provides city commission review of the public art programs achievements. In March of two thousand and twenty, our world changed to a time of uncertainty and fear. During this time, it became necessary to rethink public arts capacity, reach, and impact within our common spaces. The challenge the public art program faced was how to continue to integrate art into our commons with positive effect during a pandemic. Further, monumental shifts in our society occurred bringing up vital conversation around rights, equity, and identity. Questions arose about the role artists through their practice can play in creating opportunities to make a difference, and these questions continued to inform our community. An immediate effect of the shutdown was that virtually and physically, the public realm became an integral space to experience, communicate, and observe art. The diverse projects produced, implemented, and approved during this time demonstrate the program's strength in bringing direct art experiences to the public and the positive effect that can incur when integrating art into our public spaces even during tumultuous times. So an accomplished year. During that this time, we produced and implemented ten public art projects and oversaw four private developer projects. We adopted the Public Art Master Plan. We adopted a five-year Public Art Master Plan. We branded what used to be formerly known as A I P P into Art Life W P B. We created a G I S map with the public art throughout the city, which continues to be updated. We completed a restoration conservation survey of the entire collection. We documented the entire public art collection. We created new Art Life W P B pages. We started the restoration and cleaning and the maintenance of the city's public art began. And I have to say that I got a lovely phone call from the M L K Committee thanking me for taking the time and due diligence to clean M L K, the bust, and all the, which was really nice to get a thank you call. And then the investment of public and private to enhance our public spaces was over two point three million. So city-initiated projects. We're gonna, I'm gonna start off with the commons, which was our fifteen artists, fifteen spaces. Let me get out of this real quick. That was the initiating during the pandemic. And that is when the city was giving support to all the businesses, local businesses. The art program gave support to our local artists. So this is a document, this is a preview of a documentary that is now completed, and it is about twenty-two minutes.
This is a documentary about a COVID relief initiative offered to artists by the city of West Palm Beach in two thousand and twenty. It's called The Commons: Fifteen Artists, Fifteen Spaces, providing public locations around the city and funding for temporary art displays in order for creators to share their personal perspectives on the COVID nineteen pandemic. My submission was a video piece about the ups and downs of my life during COVID and quarantine. I was selected as one of the artists, and we decided that my public art contribution would be this documentary. My project was to capture the fourteen commons artists, their projects before, during, and after completion. I started filming in October of two thousand and twenty. With what began as a very isolated and unsettling year for me, I now had a reason to visit all the unique locations, to connect with fourteen creators I'd never met before, and work alongside Sibylle Walter, the admin of Public Art and Culture in West Palm Beach. I got to see our artistic community in a new light, as well as the importance of public spaces, public art, and public funding. The Commons Initiative really made us all feel seen and appreciated by the city we live in. It gave us a reason and the means to create while many of us had lost our inspiration and sources of income. Places for our art to be seen while the galleries were closed, a reason to connect with new people and make new friends and collaborators as our regular social constructs had unraveled. I'm thankful I was chosen to participate, that I had a reason to create this piece and meet all the artists, their friends and families, see their studios, learn more about them and their work. I hope you were able to see the installations in person while they were up. If not, you can visit them here whenever you like. I'm excited to see what we all do next. I hope you are too. Thank you.
So it gives you a glimpse of what turned out to be a twenty-two documentary of the Commons Project. And the next steps is to find a way to preview the piece and bring in all the fifteen artists that were participants of that. So going back to where I was. There's gonna be a couple of videos because that is the best way for me to demonstrate the strength of this program. So there was the commons. We did energy. We did natural beauty, which Anthony Burks right now is almost done with production. And so in the new year, we should see that in the five hundred block. The historic Heart and Soul with the Vecco one with masks and no mats. And let me show you a quick Facebook Live that lives there. Give me one second to make it big. And bring some volume up. I'm the Administrator of Public Art and Culture for the city of West Palm Beach. And today we are here at the city's newest park, the Heart and Soul Park in the northwest historic neighborhood. And I'm here with artist Eliot Mercado, who has been commissioned to put beautiful art into the Heart and Soul Park. And we're gonna interview him today. He's gonna talk us about what he was thinking, how he engaged the community, and the tile work and the images that they came up with, and his counterparts as well. He'll introduce them as well. So Eliot, I'm gonna give it to you.
Hi, so my name is Eliot Mercado. As Sibylle mentioned, I'm here with Santi and Patricia Baro. They're part of our team. And then we're here putting, making this park look very beautiful.
You wanna tell us about the kind of tile and what the process is? We have a young gentleman here working.
Yeah, so Odo is part of our team. And this is hand-cut glass tiles, mosaic tiles. So this is gonna last for a while. It will never fade. And yeah, so this is, this is a memory park, obviously, Heart and Soul. And we're gonna be putting a bunch of music-inspired and some of the people from the community, some of the founding members of the community, and we're gonna put them all over the park.
So let's walk over there because there's another gentleman who's working on the process. And I think as a medium, a lot of people don't know a lot about tile work. And if you can walk us through, because you guys have chosen really vibrant colors as well. If you can just kinda share your thoughts of the imagery and how you wanted that vibrancy. And then also show us what exactly he's doing.
Yeah, so we picked vibrant colors because we wanted the park to really stand out. When we first saw the benches, they were really great. And we wanted, kinda to reflect the vibe and the energy of the musicians and the community. So we wanted the park to really stand out. So that's what we chose the colors. And right now, he's putting on a thin set to kinda hold down the tiles. So the thin set is gonna hold down the glass tiles. And then after that, we're gonna come back and route it. We're just gonna seal it from the rain. And then after that, we're gonna put another sealer on top to protect it from any water in extreme weather.
And this one is gonna be Nat King Cole, correct?
Correct.
All right. And who, who do we have working?
My uncle, Vettilio, he's one of the masterminds behind the whole thing. Like, he helped us a lot. He's actually been doing this his whole life, kinda doing letterwork. So once we got the project, we got involved with the project, I reached out to him and told him what we had going on. And he was super eager to jump on the project and help. And he's been one of the main helping hands behind the project.
Yeah, the main installer. That's great. Let's walk over to Ray Charles. And can you, can you tell the audience some of the key individuals, musicians, and members that we're going to see at the Heart and Soul?
Yeah, we could do that. So right here, we have, so right here, we've got Ray Charles. He's gonna come back this way. We have Ray Charles, and I kinda wanted to catch the whole energy. Like I mentioned before, we have a lightning bolt coming out, like he was shouting, hey, something like that. So yeah, and you know, it's pretty proud to introduce some of the people that we're gonna have installing as well.
Yeah, so basically, when we were coming up with a concept, we sent out a survey, basically, for the community to find out what they wanted to see in the park. And we got a lot of responses, everything from some of the artists that performed at the Sunset Lounge, which included Ray Charles, Ike and Tina, Ella Fitzgerald, James Brown, Fats Waller, and some of the greats. And then we also looked into the history of the community. People like Grant Cherry, Alice Mickens, and several other landmark figures that really made, yeah, the Stark family, that really made the historic community so vibrant and unique. So on each bench, you're gonna see a featured person, either that or a theme surrounding it, whether it's music or jazz, making sure that there's a story told, and not just beautiful artwork, but there's a story behind each piece.
And when do you guys, when do you anticipate finishing up in the new year?
Yeah, so we're aiming for mid-January.
Okay.
Mid-January, so this is gonna be complete wrap.
All right, wonderful. You guys, thank you so much for taking the time. So come out now. You can see them working or come out later and see the new artwork at the historic Heart and Soul Park, brought to you by Art Life W P B in partnership with the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city of West Palm Beach. So the artist has met a lot of community members who have come about. And after this Facebook Live went, they've had a lot of visits from people who don't live in the neighborhood who came out specifically to see the artwork. Because tile work is a very different thing, and I think people appreciate it a lot. And so that was really neat to do. We had sun salutations in Sunset Park. H C D is getting some artwork, metamorphosis, another local artist, Michelle Drummond, for the library. Her piece should be ready in February. We have Florida Flora, Daniel Barojas. That was that partnership with F P N L. And he amazingly put that together in less than thirty days. And I will tell you, that is an achievement considering the size of this thing. West Palm Beach, I'm Sibylle Walter. I'm the Administrator of Public Art and Culture for the city. And with me today is Daniel Barojas.
Hello, everyone.
He is an artist from Florida who was commissioned to do this wonderful project that you see behind you, a giant, large-scale mural. This is coming through you through the city of West Palm Beach's Art Life in partnership with Florida Power and Light. And so it's a great entry point into the city downtown corridor. And we're gonna talk to Daniel about what his thoughts are when he was doing this project and have him walk us through this magnificent piece. So Daniel?
Hi, everyone. How you doing? My name is Daniel Barojas. I'm originally from Mexico City. I live in St. Petersburg, Florida currently. This is a beautiful mural that I've been working on tirelessly for several weeks now. The theme of it is Florida Flora. It features various different plant life from throughout Florida. Each of the plant lives are grouped into different groups of green. And so each of those tones form like a subsection that is then shaded apart to create depth. In addition to that, we have a pattern that goes all throughout the mural. This is a stencil pattern based on palms. And then these interlace into each other. They're each applied individually throughout the entire wall.
So can you walk us through your color blocks and your color choices?
So the center area here that has the young sapling, this symbolizes new life and new beginnings. So from here, you have a radiating circle gradient in sunset colors that spread out throughout the piece. And you can see that coming here from the orange to the white, blues, and down there further. Here up top, you can see some of the groupings in two of the different green tones. Each one of these has different shading to them to set them apart. And as you can see, we're still working.
So I'm like, they, all these Facebook Lives that I do with the Communications Department exist in our Facebook page. And we did, I did one for each of the fifteen artists during the commons. And they're just a really different way to interview an artist and get to know their practice, but also to learn about the media because a lot of people don't. And so I'm not gonna go and walk you through each one, but you get the gist. So we had eighteen local artists that we were able to commission, three regional artists, and one internationally renowned artist. And we had, this was a commission with Brian Wood, a local artist with the C R A. This is on our three hundred block. Natural Beauty with Anthony Burks and other local artists. As I said before, he's in production and should be installing by the new year. And this was our, this was our big one. This is Materials S G Two by Inkasha Nabari at C B E. This is our first public and private partnership, and it happened with related companies at three sixty Rosemary. It's a, it's a piece that a day doesn't go by that somebody doesn't tell me how amazing it is to see it there and how they, it just brings a vibrancy to the city. This piece is one that you approved last year. And it's actually, I just caught it two days ago. It's being installed right now. It should be done in a few weeks, and you need to put lighting and paint it and finish the installment of it. But it sits down at six nine five South Olive, so if you're driving by there. This Carolyn Salas is the one for the private program for Casamara. And this is the Mercer Park Apartments. This is another artist who worked really quickly. My photos don't do it justice. If you do get a chance to go out there, you should. The way he, his palette works is really interesting. And it, as I said, my photos don't do it justice. And then this one, for Ben Leon, for the three, four, five band. And he's in production right now. Once the building is up, he should, where they're looking at late spring, that we will see the orchids. So during the Public Art Master Plan, I have, there's a set of accomplishments, one, two, two to three, up to five years. And so far, we've been able to update the criteria, document all the public art, make that G I S map, inventory of the public art collection, start the conservation and maintenance schedule. Ongoing, we still intend to implement temporary projects in order to get a better understanding of the needs and desires of the community. We encourage and sustain cross-departmental collaborations. We're still marketing Art Life W P B. And we will continue to collaborate with our cultural institutions, organizations, and the private sector on our public art projects. So looking ahead, looking ahead, what we have is for commissions that are coming up, another Heart and Soul Commission. This is under contract right now with Nikisha Dorret, an artist from D C, who came out and was able to meet the community. We went with Dr. Nguyen, as well as Gina Baker, and over a two-day span. And so she understood a lot more about the community, their desires. She learned, she heard a lot of stories, which was great. South Olive Park, it is the wall, the racquetball wall that is east-facing towards Olive. Artist Jill Hotchkiss presented to the community. And her contract is being developed. So we'll commission her to do a piece, not a mural. She doesn't, she's gonna do something different. She might integrate mural-ish things, but we'll see what she comes up with. And then we have a one-day public art event with another artist, a local artist, Gregory Dur. And this is one that Utilities and Public Works and Sustainability came to the public art program and said, "We want to bring awareness to our stormwater inlets, bring that awareness of the importance that whatever goes down there goes right back into us." And so what we've done is we've identified key stormwater inlets in Clematis Street, and that'll be the pilot program. The lead artist will design something, and then it's community-driven. He's gonna do almost like a paint-by-number. And it's a one-day event and all, and working with all these departments. You know, it's a lot of logistics in the background, but I think what will be produced will be really dynamic. Northwood Village, the C R A, has requested some public art that would be integrated throughout the city. And I am researching artists right now. And looking ahead is Game Parks and Curry Park for our commissions. Coming soon, the private development sector in the next coming years. This is really gonna be a huge focus for the city. As far as public art goes, we have a tremendous amount of private development going on. And the ones that you see here have already said and put in their public art assessment application that they will be integrating art onto their site. And there you have it, Art Life. Thank you for your continued support, and I'm happy to entertain questions. I can walk you through our process if you'd like, beginning to end, or answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Sibylle. A couple of observations. One is, I like the Facebook Live, the videos. I think it's nice to be able to hear from the artists themselves as to what their thought process is. I continue to be amazed by that side of the brain. I can't remember if it's the left side or the right side where creativity is because I don't have that. And so to actually hear from the artists, you know, the amount of thought that goes into how they do what they do is quite informative. Second, through Art Life, I know from conversations that I've had with companies, individuals who have moved here recently or looking to move here, West Palm Beach is establishing a reputation as a very art-friendly, my words, not theirs, community. And it's through in no small part to the program that you're heading. So, and it's throughout our city. And then I think that is part of what makes our city so unique is the different offerings of art, public art, that are available. So kudos, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, Commissioner Shov.
Thank you, and thank you, Sibylle, and the Art Life Committee and everyone involved in this process. I know you take a lot of time and dedication to the great artwork that's throughout our city. And I think my question goes to the great job you're doing in that there is a popularity of neighborhoods, et cetera, wanting to have art within their communities. Could you talk a little bit about the process? You know, I know specifically in the north end, we had a great community engagement that got the mangoes at Thirty-Sixth Street. And I know there's been other requests from communities to say, "How do we voice the desire to have art throughout our community?" Sunset Park, which I know you had on your list there too, great community engagement process, et cetera. How would neighbors be able to come out and support and help to get art into their local community?
So with all these, Sunset Park, you know, I got phone calls saying, "Is this feasible? Would, you know, we'd love to see a public art piece in the park." I said I would get back to them because, you know, the decision has to be based also on other departments and the feasibility of that. So on that one, it was Parks and Recreation. Leah and her team were more than willing to do it. And then it goes down again to these logistics. You go to the site. I bring usually utilities, engineering. You have to look at the site and say, "Okay, can we really do something here? Or are we going into infrastructure that we're not supposed to?" And once we got the, those sort of like, I call them the black and white of the public art program, I went back to the community and I said, you know, "I'm gonna bring it to my Art Life Committee", presented it to them, the Art Life Committee. We had a discussion about funding and what that would, what that piece would look like. And this, for this one, they said a sculpture, which was appropriate for the park. And, and then it was determined by the Art Life Committee that they wanted to do a regional call to artists. And so we did that, and we received countless applications. And they narrowed it down to three. Those three did proposals of those three. This is one where the community, though they could not vote, they could be vocal and they could say, you know, "This is why I think this artist sort of fits what we're trying to do." And, you know, I see this artist's practice going in the flow of what we desire in our community. And the Art Life Committee takes that into consideration. And then it was Vito de Bari who was selected, and he was tremendous to work with as well. And that one also exists. There's a, there's a video for him too. And then the rest is, you know, going through the process of funding, then approval, then your approval, and then the contract, you know, and then it just goes on and on.
Thank you. And I guess so to summarize, first, you look at feasibility from your perspective, publicly owned land, unless there's some sort of private partnership being brought to the table. And then consideration taken to the Art Life Committee as to how they would like to see that fit within the Art Master Plan, et cetera.
Correct.
So I'll start with that one request over to you.
Okay. Sounds good.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I guess my question is to jump off of what Commissioner Shov was asking. I was also wondering, how are we incorporating all neighborhoods in our city, whether or not one of the neighbors comes to us first? I mean, are there things that we're doing to look for spaces to make sure and ensure that we have Art Life represented throughout the city? I notice a lot of things downtown, which is great for me. I love walking around and seeing everything. But I know that a lot of people might not be watching this and know that they have to call us to suggest a spot. So are there other ways that we're just taking it into consideration ourselves to find spots?
So it also falls into the public's, like, I put Gaines Park in there because Gaines Park will inevitably be, will have art going into it because they're doing a whole new building. And so we'll integrate art into that. So sometimes it's about what projects are happening in the city, and we try to integrate that art component into the city. So that's one way to look at how to equitable distribution of art throughout the city is just, something's happening already. Let's see if we can integrate that art piece in there. And then the other one, as I said, you know, if sometimes communities have called and they're like, "We wanted a roundabout." And I'm like, "Oh, let's, you know, let's rethink this whole thing." So it comes down to having a conversation and open dialogue and see what they're really looking for and how that fits into the ordinance, how that fits into the Public Art Master Plan. And, you know, does it achieve the mission and the goals so that the community gets what they desire? It is part of the Public Art Master Plan. So, and then I just keep looking, you know? It's really about looking like, okay, here, like the south end, you know, we've done things in the north end. We've done things sort of on the extension, outer extensions of downtown. And now we're going towards the south. And, you know, just little by little, like these incremental steps.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Warren?
Sibylle, can you talk about the plan or if it's in the plan for the western communities? The, for art and the, um, you know, I have to tell you that a few years ago, no, more than a few years ago, I went out there and they were not too sure. So now it's about looking at their space. So one of the things is you have to look at common spaces. You have to look at public spaces and the feasibility of that. Otherwise, it becomes, if you can't, if you can't congregate in a public space, if there's, it's very, if it's gated, we can't go in. Anything that's gated, we're not allowed in. So I'll, you know, it's time to take a look. I'm happy to do so and see what, where it would fit.
Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you for that presentation. It was very informative. And at some points, Sibylle, can you give us an idea of an accounting fiscal report? How much we have in?
Oh, yes, I submitted that in the receiving. Oh, yes, I submitted that in the receiving file, and I have it here.
Okay.
I can give it to you really quick. I can just give you quick numbers, but I did the receiving file right before the end of the fiscal year, as I do every year for, for this. And so the expenditures in the pub, for the Art Life was $485,000. The private sector was $1.7 million. The CRA was $170,000. And between all of us, it was over $2.3 million in investment.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, great job. Okay, next item, parking rate adjustments. Mr. Fauna, are you gonna tee this up, or are we going straight into the?
Yeah, I'm gonna tee it up, if I can find it. Where is it? Oh, here we go. Good morning and happy holidays, everyone. Armando Fauna, Assistant City Administrator and Mayor Commissioners, thank you. By the way, I just want to add for, for Art Life, I always like to point out those funds that, that Sibylle mentioned are not general funds, so they can only be used for art activ, public art activities. So let's talk a little bit about parking, making a shift. Obviously, our city is, is growing tremendously. I mean, we hear every day about the amount of development happening in our city, of the amount of private sector and public sector investments. You just heard Sibylle talk about all the buildings that are, all the developments happening, it's impacting art as well. So all that also impacts other city services, including parking. Parking infrastructure needs are growing, parking enforcement needs are growing as our city grows. And so we have to keep up with that growth. And one of the way we do, one of the ways we do that is through parking fees. Parking fees being too low, and then before I get to that, let me tell you that we, we've talked to several stakeholders on these proposals on parking fees already. We've gone to the Downtown Merchants a few months ago and spoke to them about it. We also went to the Downtown Develop, or DDA Board and spoke with them about these proposals. And then also the Downtown Neighborhood Association, because all of our paid parking really is in downtown. So what are the impacts when our rates are too low? And by the way, we haven't had a rate increase since 2013, I believe it is. So it's been quite a while. One of the, when you have low parking rates, you really discourage parking compliance. So the people who wanna park for convenience, which is the majority of people, they will locate a parking space and they will stick in that parking space all day, which then clogs up the space, doesn't have, you don't have circulation on the space, and therefore you don't have circulation on the, on the street in order to be able to access businesses. So that's a big key thing when it comes to parking rates. It's behavioral. It's not just a, a way to raise revenues to pay for the infrastructure. It's also behavioral in some ways. You've probably seen, you've been on Clematis where there's people double parking in order to be able to try to access a sandwich shop or whatever, a coffee shop and get in and out. The reason is, again, people are not moving from the spaces because the parking rates are too low. That's impacting behavior, that then backs up the traffic. I'm just reading, I'm not, you know, Ed's gonna come up in a minute, because he's the expert, but I was reading not too long ago, an article about one of the biggest challenges with parking and parking rates, and one of the biggest impacts to downtowns when it comes to traffic is people cruising for parking spaces. That is one, that is probably the number-one reason why traffic backs up in the downtowns. And so as, again, as you do, as you have parking spaces being occupied and there's no flow, these, these traff, these folks that are coming to visit downtown are just gonna keep circling and circling until they find a space because they're not, they're, and then there's no spaces being vacated. And as you had, Clematis, Detour Streets and some other parts of our growing downtown are really prime examples of that. Before I turn, turn it over to Ed, I'm gonna just give you just a quick rundown of the reasons why we even have parking fees. Now, sometimes I'll see on, on some social media posts, "Why are we even charged for parking? Parking should be free." So as I mentioned, parking influences behaviors. And so if we don't have, if we don't have circulation, we get into the problems we talked about before. The infrastructure, as, you know, as we, we're growing. The city's growing, we've gotta grow our infrastructure with it, including, including parking. All that stuff is, costs a lot of money, and you know, we'll get into a little bit of that later. There's new technology we need to incorporate. You've seen some of that in some of the garages. Just the garages themselves, we have to make sure our garages are stable. The balance, but there is a balance, and I always tell people this, between charging the fees that discourage visitors from coming and charging too little based on the existing demand. And that's the balance that we, we've tried to reach here, based on stakeholder feedback, based on what we know about, what Ed knows about parking behavior and, and the parking industry and where it's at, and in comparisons with some of our sister cities, which you'll see. And as you see there in the slide, as I mentioned, parking rates have remained unchanged since 2013. I think that's probably the only thing I can think of that prices haven't changed since 2013. So with that, I will turn it over to Ed Davis, our Parking Administrator, to go into more detail.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
Commissioners. This is my first time actually giving a presentation in front of the dice, so.
No pressure.
Don't be nervous. I do just wanna echo what Armando led into about the city developing, which is bringing the, the attractions are here and people are coming to downtown. There's no doubt about that. The traffic on the street reflects the, the appeal of the city of West Palm Beach. And some of the biggest frustrations that we hear in the Parking Administration is the frustrations of not being able to find a place to park. Or, or, or some of the other parking, available parkings in the city, not the city parking availability, is the overpricing of some of those. And anyway, the behaviors are only gonna be affected by the price of our parking, especially the high demand of parking on the street. All right, so let me get into the slide so I can, you know, follow along. Let me get my glasses here. We did a quick study. Our, our systems that we have on the street, the meters that we have on the streets, we have softwares that tracks all the transactions. So we did it, we took a, a month's data to give you a reflection of the demand that is on the streets in the downtown, specifically the, the street, the Clematis Street and the Detour Streets. And what you see here, right, is just a brief monthly snapshot of the number of transactions during the month, right, just on the 100 through 500 block of Clematis and the 100 to 300 block of Detour. And as you can see, although the number of meters has drastically been reduced since the Streetscape projects, the demand for on-street parking is still there. The bad part about it is, as you can see all the way over here on the right, is the number of, amount of time spent at these parking spaces beyond the time that they've paid for parking. What this actually reflects is the fact that we don't have any turnover. And the biggest reason why we don't have any turnover is because the prices are too low. The prices are such that it doesn't change the behaviors of the parks that are coming downtown. The lower it is, not only with the rates at the meters themselves, but along with the citations, the fines for citations, if they do get a ticket, it's not enough for them to change their behaviors. All right, and as, as you can see, our turnover, basically one out of every three cars that park violate the time of the, of the, the time that they've paid for parking on the street. So our, our turnover, our, our violations, or if you will, our expired overtime parking is in excess of 30%. And that's a, that's a big number for people to stay in, in those meters for the time that they stay there. Again, reflecting that we don't have any turnover. Again, I spoke about this earlier. This is the, pretty much a snapshot of the reduction of the spaces during the, that was created by the Streetscape. 60% of our meters on Clematis have since disappeared since 2019. But the demand for parking on the street is still there. These are our current rates as compared to the rates of our adjacent cities. As you can see, our rates in our highest demand area, which is Clematis and Detour and the, and the blocks that were displayed earlier, is only $1.25 an hour. The biggest travesty of these parking rates is that it's free after 7:00 PM. Don Schup is one of the foremost experts in the parking industry. He's got a book about this thick. It talks about the pitfalls of free parking and how free parking, at the end of the day, is not free at all. As you can see, even in Delray, Fort Lauderdale, Hollywood, Boca Raton, we did the comparison. You can see we are substantially lower in, in our parking fees. These are some of the fees for parking at some of the privately-owned parking areas within the city, not just the city garages. And as you can see, again, how drastically higher the competitive parking is in the city from the city parking garages. Again, with the, even with the addition of the new 360 Rosemary and what their parking rates are going to be when they open it up to the public, if it's not already open, okay? And also in Rosemary Square, all right? And prior to them changing the name of City Place to Rosemary Square, we would get the complaints about the Parkinson City Place, because when they heard the word "city", they would automatically assume it was ran by the city government. Our proposed rate for the highest demand areas here on the street is to raise the rates to $2.50 an hour, continuing to restrict it to a two-hour minimum, a two-hour maximum for parking. That's in order to encourage turnover. And even the $2.50 an hour means if you're down there two hours, it's only gonna cost you $5 for parking. That's still substantially lower than a lot of the places now. It may not change a lot of people's behavior, but it's, it's a start point to change the behaviors of those that they know the parking is a little bit higher. They may be a little bit more conscientious about the time that they're gonna be parking there and when it's time for them to leave, to give someone else, else a chance to be able to access the parking spaces on the street. We are proposing to eliminate free parking after 7:00. The cruising and the congestion of traffic on the street, this free parking is a major contributor to that problem. Now, although we do have less amount of meters on the street, which contributes, excuse me, contributes to that problem as well, all right? The, the free parking is the biggest culprit as to why you get a lot of that cruising. If you come down there on the busiest nights, Thursday night, Friday night and Saturday night, it's very difficult, it's very difficult navigating the streets. It's a lot of congestion on the streets. There's a lot of people waiting for someone to move from a parking space. Or there's someone double parking and "I'm gonna jump out, I'm gonna be gone about five minutes." And, you know, we'll get them a citation, and I guarantee you that five minutes turns into 15 or 20 minutes. You know, so our efforts to try to keep that traffic flowing is a very difficult one. We also are planning to establish an overnight rate at the meters that'll save a lot of the visitors to downtown, especially for those who are visiting, some of the folks in the condos or apartment buildings, or especially those apartment buildings that don't have parking for their residence, to be able to park overnight without feeling like they're gonna exceed the amount of time by coming down every two hours and dropping money in the meter or, or putting their credit card in the meter in order to make sure that they don't get a citation.
Let me mention something before you go on.
Sure.
Just real quick, Mayor Commissioners, just wanted to mention on the parking on Sundays. So currently, it's free parking on Sundays. We are proposing eliminating that. And we've had a number of complaints about issues in our garages on Sundays and also some of the, the crowds that are coming in on Sundays with these brunches. So, you know, we, we hope this will help that. Right now, the garages are not attended on Sundays. We don't have the revenue to pay for it. This would help pay for that and I think help, just control the situation a little bit more on Sundays. And I said, we, the mayor and us, all of us have received complaints about some of the activity happening on Clematis on Sundays.
Thank you, Armando. The free parking on Sunday is a major problem. If you've been downtown on, on a, on a Sunday, you know, it's probably one of the busiest days of the week with folks that are coming to the downtown to patron the businesses or patronize the restaurants. It's a, it's a very busy day, so the park, the free parking on Sunday is a big problem for that. With our proposed increase, the highest demand rates, as you can see on the map here, all right? Everything outside what we consider the downtown, parking where the highest demand is, we still wanna keep our rates reasonable, all right? As you can see in these areas here to the, to the west of the downtown or even to the south of the downtown, we, we plan on raising those meters that are currently at 75, between 75 cents and a dollar, to just $1 per hour, making it still convenient and reasonably priced for those who don't mind walking a few blocks to get to the downtown. And in, in north of Banyan, it's still a high, that's kind of a higher demand, not as high as downtown. We're proposing to raise those rates to just merely $1.50 an hour. For our garage parking, right now, our rates... Did I skip a slide? No. Right now, our rates in the garage that haven't changed since 2013 are a dollar for the first two hours, and each additional hour is a dollar, with the maximum rate of $10. You'd have to be in a parking garage for about 11 hours to even get to the maximum rate. The demand on the parking garages are increasing because of the reduction of the meters on the street, and that's gonna continue, that demand is even gonna get higher with all the development now and the continued reduction of meters due to the development that's going on around the city. So our proposal is to maintain that first hour at, I mean, that, that, that first two hours at a dollar, for the first two hours. And then each, propose an additional hour, or each additional half hour of $2 for each additional half, each additional half hour thereafter, which basically says if you're here for three hours of parking, it's only gonna cost you $5. It's still a reasonable rate for parking in the downtown. One of the things that happened right after the traffic, uh, demand study that was done a couple of years ago, when the outreach was done, we asked the public, what were their concerns when it came to parking? Was it price, convenience or availability? Price was not the issue. It was convenience and availability. So we wanna be able to give them that convenience and availability with also maintaining a reasonable price, much lower than some of the privately-owned lots that surround the downtown. Also, a lot of the concern for the merchants downtown is the parking for their employees, especially the service-related employees in the restaurants. One of the things that we're offering that is, oh, excuse me, let me backtrack. The seven, the, the free parking after 7:00 PM, we have discovered that it is occupied mostly by those employees. So when the merchants or the restaurant owners complain about the fact that their customers have no parking on the street, it's because their employees are taking up that parking, so they don't have to pay the current parking permit rates to park in the garages. What we plan to do to address that issue is to give those service industry employees a 50% discount on the parking permit rates, to get them into the garages, again, opening up spaces for their patrons to park on the street when they come downtown. Some of the reasons for our proposed parking increase are to promote shorter terms for parking on the street and create the turnover that we talked about earlier, reducing of the, of the congestion on Clematis. Of course, we just talked about the discounted parking for the employees and to be able to shift a lot of the parking demands into our parking garages. What we've done with the revenues that we've been collecting now, being an enterprise fund, in order to make parking more convenient, is to install a parking guidance system at our city parking garages. The only one we didn't implement this into was the Banyan Garage because of all the narratives that we keep getting about the Banyan Garage going away. Still don't know when that's gonna happen, but we don't wanna throw that money into there if it's just gonna be torn down. This is a great feature to help eliminate cruising when drivers can noticeably see how many spaces are available in the garages. What we plan on doing in the future is to add the connectivity with this in our parking wayfinding signs in that last mile out, the technology is available. We're still going through the process of determining, you know, what's gonna be the best fit for the city. But it'll, it'll allow those drivers coming into the city about that last mile out to know where they wanna go, which is a big contributor to reducing the congestion and the cruising in the city. Hitting the wrong button here, so bear with me. Part of that parking guidance system, especially in our garages that have the double helix, like the Banyan Garage, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, the Banyan Garage is not affected by this, but our Ivernia Garage. If you go through that garage, you know, one floor goes up and then you have to go around the other. through that garage, you know, one floor goes up and then you have to go around the other side in order for it to come down. But in order for you to know where parking is available on the other side, you just don't have to traverse all the way up to every floor. You could see that if you go down and start headed to the downside of the garage, there's parking available in that area as well. We have implemented a new virtual customer service command center. It's actually just on the other side, attached to the garage. Anybody, if you ever want to take a tour of that, I welcome you. And this has enhanced our customer service in, excuse me, it has increased our valuable customer services to our customers profoundly. What this does is when a customer is either at the pay station or exiting the lane, they have the capability to push a button and get a live person in the event, when a live, when a live person is not in the garage facility. They're able to be, able to assist them on how to pay, difficulties that happen with payment, they're able to talk them through that. And even if the person doesn't push the button, the attention of the, the attendants here in the customer service center can see them on the camera and they can initiate that conversation to get them, or to eliminate the confusion. I have pain trying to exit the garage facility. Again, I talked about this earlier, about our wayfinding signs, part of what this revenue that we're going to end up experiencing on these increases will go to developing the advanced wayfinding around the city. One of the things about our wayfinding signs is to propose to do some uplighting on our garage facilities to better identify which is a city garage and what is not a competitive or privately owned parking facility in the city. As you're well aware too, working with the Department of Sustainability, sustainability, rather, we have chargers in the garage. We're going to upgrade those to smart chargers to make sure that those who are contributing to reducing the carbon footprint have a place to charge their vehicles. Right now, we have implemented our license plate recognition enforcement program, which speeds up the enforcement effort substantially, and it reduces the chances of a negative encounter with some of our parking enforcement officers. Although our parking enforcement officers have been trained to make sure that we do encounter the public, to make sure we give them an education, tell them about where some alternative parking areas are, right? A lot of the times when they're confronted, it's not a very pleasant interaction with the public. This license plate recognition program expedites the process of being able to determine who's in violation, whether it be an expired meter, whether it be an expired tag, whatever the case may be. Some of the other upgrades of our, that we'll be able to implement with the revenue increases, right now, we have in progress the renovations of the elevators in the Ivernia Garage. We've had several complaints about those because those elevators have been in there since the garage was rebuilt back in the eighties. We're experiencing some issues with the operation of those, and that upgrade is in process right now. I believe it's due to be completed on both elevators by sometime in mid-January. We do plan on installing additional cameras to enhance the security in the garage. Part of the GPS syst, or the PGS system that's in there right now, not only to be able to identify empty spaces, but it increases the lighting. We went from a metal halide light to a LED, that's it, to LED lighting, which substantially illuminates the garage a lot greater with fewer lighting fixtures. A lot of costs that we need to make sure that we keep up with is the ever-growing cost of maintaining structural integrity in our parking facilities. That is a big cost to us, and maintaining those garages is a major safety concern. I mean, given the incident that happened in Miami with the building that collapsed, we want to make sure we stay on top of that so we don't find ourselves a victim of such a disaster. So in order to be able to do that, we need to make sure that we continue with this enterprise fund to make sure that it's funded to be able to handle the ever-increasing cost of these Right now, our parking fines are so much lower than our sister cities. As you can see, for a parking expired meter fine, it's only $27.50. And this is one of those fines that doesn't change the behavior of someone who's expired at the meter. They'll say, "Well, you know, $27.50, I'll pay that, you know, because, you know, if I'm gonna go somewhere and pay for valet, it's about $25, $30. So it's no big deal. I'll just get the ticket." But unfortunately, that doesn't contribute to our turnover. What we propose to do with that is to increase our fines, as you can see on the slide here. Our initial fine, and it'll be a progressive fine to help change those behaviors, right? As the fines progress within the year, if you get a second citation within six months, it'll increase double, and if you get a third one, it'll double from that point as well. Our ADA violations, we have a lot of those as well. Right now, the fine is only $250. This is one of the lowest ADA violation fines in any city that I've ever seen, being in this industry for almost 27 years, right? There are some cities where that ADA violation is $500 to $1,000, and in some places, it's even more than that. I think it is very critical that we make sure that we have availabilities or folks that have legitimate ADA concerns. Phase two of this parking proposed increase is to increase the permit fees for those monthly parkers. Now, we're not, our plan is to implement this, the transit fees on-street and off-street sometime in January. This phase two, we don't plan on implementing until sometime in October, you know, as we embark upon the marketing campaign that we're going to need to let everybody know that this increase is coming. The current language in the ordinance right now for resident permit parking rates is as such. It dictates a grid that say everyone here that lives within the downtown within this grid can get a parking permit fee for $42.50. The negative impact of that is that for those folks that are living in the condos and the apartments, take advantage of this and end up storing their vehicles in our city garages, when there's available parking at their condos or some of their apartment buildings. And even if there's availability for a second vehicle at their private residence, they don't want to pay the cost, which is in excess of $100 or $125 in some cases. So because they live within this grid, they'll take advantage of that $42.50 that's on the book that hasn't been changed, I think, since 98? Hmm. Okay, so we're proposing to eliminate that, to change the language in the ordinance to, for those residents downtown who don't have parking, we're still going to give them a resident parking rate, but it won't be $42.50. We're going to move that up to $80. I'm going to show you those prices here in a minute. But it will limit it to those who don't have parking, and for limited to those who don't have parking in those, in their residence or don't have an available second parking space for those that got multi-vehicle As you can see here, these are the proposed rates that we, for our increase on our parking permits, which is really not a very large increase, right? Right now, the standard permit is only $80.20. We propose to move that to $100. In the downtown residential, we just have a 20% discount off that $100 rate to $80. Assisted living, given consideration for our senior demographic that need assisted living, we don't plan on hitting their pockets too much, right? That increase will only be a $10 increase. With that, are there any questions?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for that presentation. Mr. Davis, can you repeat, and I know you've said it before, but I want for emphasis, the outreach that you've done, the groups you've talked to?
Well, we first, yes, sir. We first talked to the merchants about this. The initial proposed increase that was done a couple of years ago, the parking rate increases were significantly different and a little bit higher. The feedback that we got from the merchants was a very favorable feedback, and they do understand the difficulties of their patients being able to patron their businesses when there's no parking available on the street. We've also reached out to the Downtown Development Authority, who was nothing but favorable feedback when we talked to them, along with the Downtown Neighborhood Association as well. We do intend, depending on the approval here from this committee, to embark on a major marketing campaign to make sure that we enlighten the entire public of these upcoming parking increases.
Okay, very good. Can you also address the, one thing I hear is that there's never any parking downtown. My understanding is we have plenty of parking. Can you address that, the supply of parking that is available? Now, I understand maybe not be on-street or inexpensive parking that people want, but we do have parking.
We do have parking. We have five city garages that are available to those who are coming downtown that can't find available parking on the street. I believe the number of spaces exceed almost 3,000 spaces with all of our five garages, alright? The Ivernia Garage being the highest-capacity garage that we have. So parking is available. Is it being reduced because of the man that's on there now? Yes, it is. And there are a couple of things that impact that. During a lot of special events, the garages get full very quickly. During that time, the permit holders get up in arms about the fact that they have difficulty accessing parking during special events. But there is substantial parking available during the course of the normal business day for those folks that want to come to the downtown.
Yes, sir. And Mayor, I'm glad you brought that up because I've heard that as well. And then talking to folks, especially folks who don't frequent downtown all the time, one of the issues is they don't even know these garages exist. So we've talked about, and it was mentioned in the presentation, about the wayfinding signs and better signage. Even along Clematis, I don't think we have a sign that you see like on Atlantic and Delray that says "Parking" and it gives you the arrow, "This is where the parking is." The signage outside, like on Banyan and some of the outside of the garages, has improved dramatically. But I think we need to do a much better job of that signage, both in that last mile and then around the downtown, and that's part of what this revenue will help pay for.
One of the other misperceptions about there's no parking in the downtown is the fact that a lot of folks don't like to go to the roof of these garages to park because their vehicles are exposed to the excessive heat and the weather. But in the majority of times that we get complaints about there not being any parking, I have my staff go up to the upper floors, and there's always available parking on the roofs of the garages. But again, with the elements out there, it's very difficult. You know, the pigeons using their cars, tiny cars for target practice. So people try to minimize the times or just eliminate trying to go to the roofs of the garages. But to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, parking is available in our city garages.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I have one clarification and one question. I think when the mayor just asked you about your outreach, you mentioned that the DNA and the DDA were supportive, but that the merchants were not supportive?
No, the merchants were, no, we got positive feedback from the merchants as well.
Okay, perfect. My question is, thank you so much for bringing this forward. I think at one time, one iteration of this expansion or this change included the trolley expansion being funded with some of the revenue that might be coming from parking. That wasn't mentioned in your presentation. I was just wondering if that is still on the table. You know, for me, I think a lot of especially residents that might live close enough to almost walk, but maybe on a hot day or if it's raining, you know, that they are bringing their cars. So I feel like there are some very easy neighborhoods that we could get them out of their cars if there were other options. I'm just curious if that's still on the table.
Commissioner, we actually are right now in the process of reviewing the trolley routes. We have a new city engineer who's working with the trolley operator, the DDA, and the CRA on reviewing what their current routes are. We have some potential grant funding that we haven't utilized yet that we want to look at to expand some of those routes and maybe even look at some different types of vehicles. The DDA has this pilot program right now with the circuit vehicles that can also help move people a little quicker and a little more efficiently, particularly when you have the narrowing of the Clematis and some of the other roads. So we are actively looking at that, whether or not we will need or we will tap into revenues that are parking revenues. We haven't got to that yet. I don't know if we need to get there yet, and it would be a matter of whether we can even use that because parking revenues, enterprise fund, has to be used specifically for parking infrastructure. So, you know, we might be able to do that in the future if needed, but right now, we have other revenue sources that I think we can fill the gap to expand the trolley.
And I thought that the money for expanding the trolley would come out of, I know we've been working with some of these private developers, and they've been looking for increased space, and we've been looking for transportation solutions. And one of those was adding money to the trolley fund. I didn't think it was coming out of our parking fees.
That's correct. So we do have private development that has contributed in certain cases to a transportation fund that we can also tap into. And of course, we're looking at mobility fees and other options.
Right. Commissioner Warren and then Commissioner Shoff.
Hi, I would like to compliment the command center and the usability and how wonderful it does work. I've had to use the command center in our facility as well as in other locations, and ours is certainly much better than any other experience I've had. So I certainly appreciate how far ahead of others we are. So I think that our team is doing a great job. I do have a couple of concerns about recognizing that the cost for parking will increase by 100%, going from $125 to $250 is a significant number percentage-wise. And I would also like to consider the hours and still having free parking that may be available if the hours may be modified.
I'm sorry, could you say that last?
Free parking that could still be available, perhaps until nine, excuse me, after nine instead of after seven. If there's any way that we can revisit that and see if there are other ways that we can compromise as it relates to the all or nothing. Because to go from $125 to $250, to go from seven to no free parking and no free parking on the weekends, I think can have a negative impact, even though I'm hearing, based on your experience and your expertise, that the shop owners are in favor of it. I think that it may be a negative impact for shoppers.
Commissioner Warren, I do understand where you're coming from with that, and there's no doubt we can have some continued discussion regarding that. But I think the prices that we are proposing here, albeit a 100% increase, when you look at the cost of parking, it's still substantially lower than all the parking in the surrounding areas. And again, going back to what we got from a public outreach a couple of years ago, the general public does not, their least concern is the cost of parking, as long as the parking cost is not anything that's considered to be outrageous. What they want more than anything else is convenience and availability. But again, we can continue having these discussions to determine whether or not if a portion of time of the day should be free parking or not. That's something I'll continue to discuss with my administration.
And Commissioner, let me add that, you know, this is demand-based parking. So as Ed mentioned, as we've had the streetscapes on Clematis reduce significantly the amount of parking, the man hasn't, if anything, it's increased because of the amount of activity happening in downtown. So if you don't price it accordingly, you're not going to have that turnover. Look, there's still an opportunity for folks who are willing to walk a block or two. Actually, if they're parking a garage, it's less than a block, a lot of cases. But even they want to park in a meter, they can park a couple of blocks away, and it's a dollar an hour or a dollar, was it 50 we went up to? The one a little bit north of here?
You're talking about the?
Yeah, north of Clematis. Yeah, when you get...
The police garage? Are you talking about the meters?
No, no, the meters.
The meters are only a dollar an hour west of...
Yeah, dollar an hour in places that are walking distance to downtown. So there still is a very, a very inexpensive option. And as Ed said, even the ones, if you're pulling up, if you get to pull up right in front of the restaurant you want to eat at, you're going to pay for that privilege. You're not paying a whole lot. You're paying $2.50 an hour, but you're going to have to pay for that privilege to park right in front of the restaurant or right in front of Starbucks.
I never get that. I'm never that fortunate.
And one of the other things regarding that too, the downtown on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays is open and the bars are open till 2, 3, or 4 in the morning if I'm not mistaken. So the demand for parking is still there, and there's a lot of cruising and a lot of traffic congestion in some of those later hours. So to even consider in the highest demand areas... So to even consider in the highest-demand areas, to consider free parking after nine o'clock will still cause a lot of traffic congestion. Maybe that's something we can consider in the areas a little further out to encourage some people to park further out if they want to walk. Okay, but I'll continue to have that discussion with my assistant city.
Well, I for one would not be in favor of free parking. I mean, when you look at our competition, some of the other cities, they have paid parking 24 hours, seven days a week. So I for one would not be in favor of offering any options for free parking. Again, we're trying to change people's behavior.
Absolutely.
And as I understand it, from the studies I've seen, what changes their behavior is their pocketbook. And so if we want to move their behavior in a direction which is best for the city, we're gonna have to price parking accordingly.
Well, I don't disagree, Mr. Mayor, and that's one of the reasons we're bringing this presentation to you.
Yeah.
The behaviors do need to change. With the congestion in the downtown, with little parking that we do have on the street, we want to be able to create that turnover, to give that availability to more, when right now, it's just only serving the few. It's not serving the many.
Right. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Davis, for the presentation. I can understand how your department's in kind of a tough situation here, right? So either you make small incremental changes year after year where residents say, how much longer is it gonna be where parking continues to go up? Or you wait a specified amount of time and say, now it's time for an incremental change. And from 2013 to now, you know, residents don't look back and say, well, we haven't had a parking increase since 2013. So it puts you in kind of a tough position of when the titration point is for that, essentially. But I think, you know, to the conversation that we're having up here, the important thing here to me is options, right? So there is an option for all income levels or all walkability levels. So, you know, to Mr. Fana's point, if I want to be closer to my destination, then there is a premium that comes with that. You know, I know certainly I make personal decisions all the time where you walk up and there is valet parking, which costs money, or you can self-park, you know? And those decisions can be made at the time where you're coming to that parking opportunity. So I think for me, what's more pertinent to this conversation is we talked about having a marketing campaign or, excuse me, an education to the public about what those opportunities are. To me, that's the key factor in this is how does our regular, everyday citizen, maybe somebody that doesn't come downtown a lot, understand that there are options? Because if they don't know that there are the options, the perception is that things have gotten a lot more expensive, where if they know that I can walk a couple of blocks or have some other alternative parking places, if I certainly don't know that this is a city parking garage versus a privately-owned parking garage. So how do we work on those strategies to educate both the public that comes downtown regularly and perhaps our every-now-and-then visitor that if they feel like parking is too expensive, may not come back when really parking was not that expensive, they had another option they didn't know about? So have we thought through that, that marketing campaign piece that you talked about?
Well, we don't have all the details of what we're gonna do with our marketing efforts. I mean, we're gonna use our city communications director to help us implement those strategies. We are in the midst right now of upgrading our parking website for folks who want to go to the city's website to be able to determine the things that you're talking about, where is parking available, what are the prices? Right now, our website is, it's functional, but it doesn't have all the information that we think needs to be there in order to adequately serve the public with regards to your comment. So we do plan on using that as well.
Absolutely. I mean, you hit it on the, you hit the nail on the head because those options are there now, and I think people don't take advantage of them. So we have to do a much better job in communicating. One of those ways is gonna be through our communications department, social media, upgrade of the website, the wayfinding signs, which I mentioned I think are critical, too, so people know, and that last mile. And then some of the apps, you know, there's ways I think you can integrate some of the parking availability into some of these like map apps, like it's Google Maps or Waze. Right now, we're utilizing Waze for traffic alerts. So if you're driving to downtown and there's construction, that's gonna come up on your Waze app if you're utilizing that. So I believe there's ways to incorporate those technologies into available parking. And so we'll be working with Kathleen and the DDA and others on a campaign that gives those options. Because I think you hit it on the head. That's the important pieces. Giving people the choices, understand there is choices.
Thank you, and I appreciate getting out there and certainly being proactive about our communication. But I think the wayfinding sign and the signage that is within the city, I guess I would wager visitors to our city are probably not doing extensive research on parking before they get here. So the education they are receiving is when they are driving around looking for a parking spot. So the clearer we can make that signage, even if it is directing them to our website resources, et cetera, just letting them have that information at the point-of-sale opportunity when they're looking for that actual parking. I think that will be key to communicating our message. So thank you.
Mr. Davis, talk to us about the pricing strategies for special events, Sunfest, Boat Show, et cetera. As I understand it, we're charging more the closer to the event, and we're having a phase out as they get further away.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. On some of these high-demand activities such as Sunfest, the Boat Show, and things of that nature, the closer you are to the activity, the higher the cost will be to park in the city garages. Right now, that cost is $20. I think we're maybe talking about increasing that to maybe 30. In comparison to those in the private lots that are charging, those prices can be upwards of $80 to park when they're coming to these events. So we definitely want to encourage the use of our city garages, at the same time, keeping that price threshold reasonable, all right, in order to be able to accommodate those that are coming to see those events. As you get further out from the event, that price reduces to as little as $5. I think we charged $5 or $10 as far east as the Sapporo garage, the garage, west, I'm sorry, excuse me, as far west as the Sapporo garage. So we do take into account that the closer that you get, the higher demand is there, the more it's costly to get there. Hopefully, encourage some people to move to some of the more lower-priced garages in order to help ease some of the congestion the closer you get to the event.
Okay, then what are the next steps with respect to implementation of this plan?
Well, we have to get, send it to the commission for approval, and then we embark on the marketing campaign to get that, to get it out to the public, so.
All right. Do you have a date when you were trying to get it on the agenda?
Do we have a date? I don't think, I haven't established a date for that yet, but.
We're gonna try to get it on the last meeting for January and with an effective date of March 1st.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add a couple of footnotes that have been touched on, but I wanted to just underscore here. No, I think Assistant Administrator Fana, you know, mentioned the fact that it is an enterprise fund. And given that it's an enterprise fund, all of the expenses, whether it's the upgrades, the staffing costs, wafer signs, all of that has to be contained within that budget. The parking fund doesn't have the flexibility where if they can't meet expenses, we then look at the general fund reserves and what have you. One of the other points I want to bring to the board's attention, and I didn't bring my budget numbers with me, but when we were dealing with the challenge of trying to balance for FY '20 when we had the major loss in revenue, and we had that across the board with all funds. In looking at the parking fund, we were in a predicament whereby if we did not address the increase in the fees, given that we lost so many parking meters on the street and the revenue from that, the parking fund was gonna be in a situation where they were going to have to rely on their reserves to meet their ongoing annual operating expenses. And their reserves are not at the level of the reserves of the general fund. And I'm sharing that to say this, that, and I know there are a number of factors that we have to balance in terms of how much of an increase in trying to maintain our prices, you know, in line, more so with the market. We have to do something because if we don't, we're gonna be in a situation where the limited amount of reserves that the parking fund has, they are going to drain those very quickly, and then you're gonna be faced with a huge increase so that they can meet the annual operating expenses. And I think this would go a long ways toward avoiding that kind of a situation.
I thank you for those comments, Ms. Johnson. And to give you a little, a bigger snapshot of that, I do have some numbers here of what happened during COVID, which was, and prior to COVID, some of those comparisons, because I believe the streetscapes and the reduction of the meters started in 2019. In FY '20, during COVID, our on-street revenues dropped 36%. And in comparison now coming forward to FY '21, we're still down 35% from the pre-COVID revenues that we were collecting on-street. And that's a combination of both the COVID impact and also the number of meters that have been taken off the streets. So the impact to our enterprise fund was drastic.
Administrator Johnson, I'm glad you made that point because one other thing that I failed to point out is the parking enforcement piece. And we're talking about downtown when it comes to the parking revenues, but the parking enforcement piece is citywide. And there's an increased demand for parking enforcement. I think, you know, just about every commissioner up here has probably called myself or Ed or somebody about a parking issue somewhere in the city. And sometimes police takes care of that, but sometimes parking, a lot of times, parking enforcement does. So although the revenues are generated in downtown mostly, the enforcement piece is citywide. So I wanted to point that out.
Are there any other questions?
Anything else? Commissioners, comments, questions? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Davis, and we look forward to this coming before the commission for more formal action. All right, I don't have anything under Mayor's Matters. Commissioners, do you have anything for the good of body? Any of you have anything for the good of the body? The only thing I will say is Merry Christmas to everyone under the sound of my voice. And commissioners, enjoy time with family, friends. Most importantly, stay safe. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.